Okay. Welcome to the Tuesday, May ninth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three working session of the Ann Arbor Planning Commission. At a working session, no decisions will occur at this meeting. Since this is our official House order, Commissioner Lee, do you want to, you have a small announcement to make?
Yes, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion, given that it's about TC one and my, oh, my company owns property in TC one. So at this point, I will say goodbye.
Goodbye.
Bye, guys. Yeah.
All righty, we will move on to public comments. This is an opportunity for persons to speak up to three minutes. To speak at the commission, press star nine if listening by phone and use the raise hand feature if you went to the web link. For phone access, call eight seven seven eight five three five two four seven and enter meeting ID nine seven seven six six three four. One two two six to unmute, press star six. City staff will select callers that have raised their hand using the last three digits of your phone number. Or by name if available for those accessing through the web link. When speaking, please move to a quiet area and mute any television or background sounds. Please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Next, Kelly or Mr. Leonard, anybody waiting?
There are no current attendees.
Okay, everybody has things to do on this beautiful evening. Okay, well, we will then move on to the meat of what this meeting is about, which is item number three, or the TC one district amendment. Narrow right-of-way conditions, so I will hand it off to whomever on staff is going to be handling this one.
I will start us off. There with me one moment here. Okay. Can everybody see the title slide TC one narrow right-of-way conditions? Great. So there's been a lot of talk about TC one, the planning commission recently. Both the work that you have undertaken in response to direction from city council over the last couple of years and a lot of progress that's been made. And so I wanted, one of the sort of outstanding to-dos is, I think the second piece of a couple of instructions that the city council provided to the planning commission. After the adoption of the TC one quarter for the stadium corridor. Surely after that meeting, you recall that the city council provided some direction for a couple of modifications that they would like the planning commission to evaluate and make recommendations to regarding. And so this evening is hopefully kicking off and making some headway on the second of those two directions. So just a reminder, I don't think I need to do that with any of you, but the intent of TC one. This is really to try to provide an opportunity for our land use policy to help guide us towards a more transit, six transit oriented development. More mixed-use development, more pedestrian-friendly forms, generally more friendly development prototypes that's going to be well-suited to interaction with each other through multi-modes of travel instead of just vehicular. And we did that through developing the TC one corridor, which is really taking a somewhat of a form-based approach. While we do have so a lot of uses limited identified and restricted for the TC one district. We really emphasize in the creation of that district form, how the development in the future that is both going to infill on existing sites or be redo, those sites are going to be redeveloped are going to relate specifically to the transit corridor. As I mentioned, in December, council directed to requested changes to that. At the time, the intention of that was to, I believe, to make some modifications to the TC one before additional corridors were considered for rezoning. I think that both from recent conversations that I've had with you at the planning commission table, and I think some conversations that are percolating at the city council. I think that there is numerous viewpoints on that. I don't want to speak council, but I think that there is also a perspective like was considered in the context of rezoning the stadium corridor that. Even if there are some adjustments that might be warranted for the TC one district, getting the TC one zoning in place in a lot of our corridors. Will help to make sure that we are not allowing the continuation of a prototype of development that is not conducive to our long-term goals. So I guess that's a kind of a bumbling way to say the TC one district might not be perfect yet, but we're not getting, certainly going to get the type of development that's been happening over decades with our current zoning framework either. And so I think that there's a bit of attention and so I want, I want to do what I can to support the planning commissioner's desires and the council's desires to keep sort of all of those related things moving expeditiously. I think frankly that there will probably some, be some movement in that regard to get us started on kicking off the Washam Plymouth corridor soon. But I thought, given a sort of a narrow window that I have right now, it would be a good opportunity to kick off the discussion of this last piece, which is propose amendments to the TC one district specific as it relates to narrow right-of-ways. The other piece, of course, are related uses, which you have already made recommendations on April eighteenth. So some of the TC one implementation challenges that I think fostered this direction from city council are just in the title. We have a lot of instances in these corridors, both the quarters that have been rezoned TC one and that are, might be considered in the future where we have a really, we have narrow right-of-way. And what that means is we have a very limited area to try to accomplish a lot of goals. Some of those goals are typically planting strip, a place for street trees. Adequate width for sidewalks or non-motorized pathways to provide adequate space for throughput of different types of transportation modes. Transit infrastructure, making sure that we have the space for those types of shelters or bus stop benches, the types of infrastructure that's going to help also support the continued growth of our transit system. And frankly, public and private amenities, everything from space for bike racks, space for parking, maybe scooters or bike share. Spaces for even on the private side, as simple spaces to provide door swings so that we are eliminating conflicts between people entering and exiting a space and maybe a more narrow right-of-way. And when we're trying to accomplish all of those things in a narrow right-of-way, things are going to give, we're not going to be able to realize all those to our full extent. We also are thinking about the TC one district and the context of a lot of different corridors with different characteristics. I want, I want to name that what I'm going to lay out for you at the end of this presentation is a proposed solution, a proposed ordinance modification. And I'm, I think I referred to it in the memo and here as kind of a blunt tool. I want to set the stage very specifically. I think that anything we do right now is, should be considered in sort of a short, moderate term kind of functionality. That is, we don't have a lot of detailed planning efforts from a capital perspective and cross-section types for a lot of these corridors. So I can't point to for State Street and or for Eisenhower, we envision this to, to morph into this cross-section or Plymouth to morph into this cross-section. We have some of those identified. We have some quarters identify expansion of our bike infrastructure, some do not. But we really don't have that detailed out. And so it's hard for us to pinpoint what the end game might be in those corridors, trying to balance all those needs. So this is really intended to be a discussion about, is there a tool or a mechanism that we could do to balance that? Making sure that we're not closing off opportunities for flexibility in the future while not forestalling the ability to move forward with TC one and development. On a site-based site basis as property owners wish to face it. And, and I also want to recognize that whether we're talking TC one, the revisioning of these corridors, the transportation modes that people are going to make in our community. These are outcomes and individual decisions that people are going to make over a long term. We are not going to be able to instantaneously sort of switch to a reduction in vehicle miles traveled by fifty percent. Obviously, we want to make smart land use decisions that help drive that momentum towards that. But I just think it's important to recognize, at least from my perspective, that all of the changes that we're thinking about in these TC one corridors. And our goals towards shifting our transportation mode, mode shares in our community. This is a long-term game and we have to recognize that it's not going to happen holistically on any single corridor. And even our opportunities probably to step in and make significant capital investments on these borders to try to accelerate that are going to be long and few and far between because they're really expensive. So so what I'm going to be laying out here, I think, is well reasoned and I'm looking forward to your feedback on it as, as we proceed. So the corridors, I want to highlight some of the characteristics of the corners as, as you're aware, we've rezoned two corridor, State and Eisenhower and Stadium Maple. And then we are potentially considering the rezoning of both Plymouth and the Washam North Corridors. And some of these, these quarters have some commonalities and they have some differences. So from a transit frequency, except for the State and Eisenhower area, all these corridors have about fifteen to thirty-minute service based on different routes in those locations. The Cities Moving Together Plan, I ask, aspires that all four of these corridors would evolve, or three of these corridors would evolve to a fifteen-minute frequency of service or better. Our plan doesn't identify any specific transit goals for the stadium corridor. You might also recall the stadium corridor is a little bit unique in the transit service and that unlike the other ones, it is not a linear served corridor. That is, there's not a single line that traverses the entirety of that TC one area as much as some of the others who feature those types of lines. There's still very automobile-oriented corridors today, some more than others. You can see that Stadium and Maple is about half of State and Eisenhower are the most, the highest traffic corridor in the city or in these four corridors. All of these are sort of the highest measurements. Generally, as I was determining them to be inbound measurements, all from twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three. Either actual measurements or projections based on previous measurements. And in all of these cases, these, you know, the traffic dissipates. For example, by way of an example, when you're looking at State and Eisenhower, this northbound volume is the average daily trips, vehicular trips along that corridor northbound. As you progress, as you progress from this point, which is basically between I ninety-four and the, and the first road that I'm liking on the name of. Not Hilton on the west, but by the Red Roof Inn. To the two data points north of Eisenhower, we lose about half that traffic. So about half of the vehicular traffic dissipates from the point of just north of I ninety-four to north of Eisenhower. So some of that's probably going in either direction. Some of it might be going to the mall. Some of it's going to those office uses right there in that corridor, right? So that's something to keep in mind. You get similar sort of fluctuation with those councils or those quarters. From a bike infrastructure, I know that there was a lot of conversation as we started talking about the narrow right-of-way, particularly as it relates to Stadium and Maple. From a planning perspective, two of these corridors are identifier and our plan is serving our bike needs in their current configuration. Stadium and Maple and Washon are Moving Together Plan are identified as existing bike routes. Whereas the Plymouth and State and Eisenhower corridors, those are specifically proposed for all ages bike networks, which are high priorities for future capital improvements. So all of the corridors are identified as part of our bike network. You will see in that plan that, for example, Stadium and Maple is identified as a major bike network. But it's not identified for future infrastructure upgrades from what is provided now. I think that gets into some of the conversation we had previously when we invited some of our traffic transportation engineers to talk about sort of the long-viewed challenges of moving curb lines. You know, when you start thinking about varying right-of-way widths, there are a lot goes into that other than just deciding what we want to accomplish. You got to deal with utilities, you got to deal with property and the like. And then we have a lot of differing conditions about the actual right-of-way. And so I spent some time trying to sort of identify the ranges of what is the existing distance between curb line and property line as a measure of that conflict, that limited space where we're trying to accomplish a lot. And it varies substantially in all of the corridors. There are places where we have zero distance between a private property line and the curb. So in most cases, we already had, do have some public access easements in some of those circumstances. So I don't want to say that, that's not to say in those circumstances that we don't have sidewalks there. But we already have instances where the only way we can provide some level of public infrastructure along these corridors is by utilizing private property for that purpose. Beyond those sort of most extreme challenging sites, the right-of-way ranges, as you can see, really drastically. Stadium and Maple, I don't think is surprising to anybody. That's sort of the more, more, most narrow band. But in a lot of the other quarters, we have really drastically different rights of way that range from probably as much room as we could ever possibly need to some that could be more challenging. So a couple of examples of some of these sort of extremes. This right here is the, the corner of Hilton heading into Briarwood Mall in South State. You can see the property line actually extends into the curb line, this, this sort of washed-out area is an indication that we've already got a public access easement already for a portion of that property, but just showing some of the probably constraints about the lack of sidewalk here, not only the connection further south, but just the confined space here. This right here, I believe, is the intersection of Jackson and Maple. And so this is the, the gas station at that corner, and you can see that this little property actually extends quite a far, quite a bit into that right-of-way. We're already seeing that we've have some, some easement for some, the maintenance of some portion of the road and the sidewalk in that area. This right here is, I think, the Speedway on Stadium and Arbordale. So this is plenty, you see this line, red line here is the curb line, you're seeing the bike lane and the road, the curb line, the sidewalk, and then the property line. As you can see here, like the sidewalk itself is probably right on that property line, or even maybe even a little bit encroaching into that property. It's a little bit hard to tell from the aerial photography, but get a sense of the constraint. And then here we are on the Washam North Corridor. This is the auto body shop. And then this is a relatively newer office development near, sort of on the corner of Chalmers and Washam. You can see that really comes down to a, a point here, this is the zero point on the Washam North Corridor where we already have sidewalks that are relying on private property in order to achieve that, let alone any of these sort of other amenities or more desirous conditions that we might be seeking for these corridors. So next, I'm going to turn it over to Hank, and Hank has done, I think, some just phenomenal work, sort of pulling in some case studies to sort of size a potential approach. And so they're going to walk us through a couple of case studies, both from specific communities and from some guiding agencies. That'll help, helps set the stage of how some communities are approaching this challenge.
Thanks, Brett. I'll do a short self-description for our guests listening in. I have on a gray jacket. I have short brown hair and I'm in a office with yellow walls. My pronouns are they/them? So our case studies, I'm going to switch sharing screen and I'm going to share a different screen with you. We tried to survey a list of common peers that we use in the planning department. There are a variety of lists that we pull from when we try to find out what cities of similar characteristics, maybe other college towns or similar sizes or similar transit districts have in common with us. And that does not always mean that in this case, those cities and places have robust and up-to-date design guidelines. So the list that we started with, we supplemented with a couple of larger cities and also industry organizations. That resulted in surveying eight case studies that you see here of other cities. And nine, if you include our own draft downtown street design manual. And then we also took a look at a handful of industry publications that speak to this topic of allocation of space between curb and building frontage. So I will walk through four of these. I'll look at two cities and two of the industry organizations, in one case a federal agency. And this guide will be included for you after today's meeting for further review. But basically what we did was, we list the source of what the particular guidelines or plans are. We picked a cross-section from that city or from those guidelines that made the most sense for comparing with TC one. And then we looked at what the minimum space was, if it was allocated to a particular zone within that piece of the right-of-way, that curved building, building frontage space within the right-of-way. And then if beyond the minimums, was there a higher range identified in that community? So the, the zones basically break into three areas, a landscaping amenity zone, sometimes it's called a buffer zone, a furnishing zone. Then a pedestrian zone and a frontage zone that is next to the building. So the first case study is from Eugene, Oregon. Eugene actually had some pretty up-to-date design guidelines. They updated their design guidelines in twenty twenty. And they had not only a plan that identified street typologies, but they also had this handy design standards cheat sheet that was separate and really implementation-oriented. Looking at their different street typologies, they have one called mixed-use neighborhood that seemed to be roughly akin to what is trying to be achieved here in Ann Arbor with TC one. Just an excerpt from the description for the mixed-use neighborhood, street type. Their plan said mixed-use neighborhood streets contain a variety of uses, including residential dwellings, restaurants, retail stores and institutional uses. These streets typically have relatively dense development with multi-story buildings near the street. A relatively high pedestrian and bicyclist volumes and often serve transit. Oh, another example that we found interesting and is from a go-to peer list that, that we use in the department was from Gainesville, Florida. And Gainesville embedded their requirements in their zoning code. They have a transect-based and form-based zoning code. And they specify the distance, the maximum building placement from curb by street type. And right into their form standards. So their closest peer probably to TC one was this type called Principal Street. And in Principal Street, the minimum distance between building face and curb is seventeen feet and the maximum is so this is more rural. And as you move this way within their transect, DT would be downtown. So as you compare the, the typology or the principal street within something probably similar to TC one, we're looking in this section right here. And so the the maximum distance that they advise that they want in their code between building face and curve is twenty-seven feet. And their breakdown, they have landscape is the first part of the slash, then sidewalk, and then building frontage or the frontage zone. So frontage, clear space, or I'm sorry, landscape, pedestrian, clear space, frontage zone. So they prefer this breakdown of six feet, six feet, and then five feet for their building frontage zone. Principal streets include lower levels of pedestrian activity compared to storefront streets. Located in mixed-use areas where traffic volume anticipated to be higher than on local streets. One of the national, one of the industry examples that we pulled is from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. If you work with traffic engineers at all, you'll know that this is a go-to organization for them. They put out a lot of very valuable guides. Some of them are guides that we reference and require to be referenced during our site plan process in the, you know, and in our UDC. This particular example comes from a guide that they put out, although it was a while ago, it has, I don't believe been updated. This is from twenty ten. The NACTO guide that is referenced and you'll see forthcoming, it was also from quite a while ago, twenty twelve. But this is called Designing Walkable Urban Thoroughfares. And this table is called Minimum Recommended Streetside Dimensions for Thoroughfares in Walkable Areas Under Constrained Conditions. So these are minimums that they're recommending under constrained conditions when you are not able to provide more space. So the excerpt from the guide that I found relevant was that in constrained conditions, it's tempting to only provide the minimum pedestrian throughway five feet in their recommendations. In urban areas, however, even under constrained conditions, it's critical to provide a minimum with furnishing zone to accommodate street trees, utility poles and other appurtenances. Otherwise, street paraphernalia, paraphernalia might encroach into the throughway or result in an inadequate with street side. And the, the last study that I'll highlight here is from US Access Board, their Public Rights of Way Accessibility Guidelines. Not all, maybe all of you, but maybe not all of you are familiar with the Access Board. It is a federal agency. It was created in nineteen seventy-three. They're charged with developing and maintaining accessibility guidelines and standards under the Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety and other laws. In particular, this is relevant, what this agency, how this agency interprets the application of ADA for TC one because they have guidelines that apply to transit zones. And in particular, boarding and alighting areas for transit, which means bus stops. If you want to improve a bus stop and you are either any, any actor that in Ann Arbor might want to pay for a stop upgrade based on the geography, it could be and based on funding agreements and so forth. It could be the DDA, it could be the city, it definitely could be AAA TA. You will be required to upgrade those in accordance with Access Board guidelines. And Access Board requires that there be an eight-foot minimum dimension perpendicular to the roadway and a five-feet minimum paved level surface, and they specify slopes, et cetera. Parallel to the roadway. So that eight feet is important because if there is a building at the seven-foot mark, then what happens in, in practice in my experience is that usually the, the hassle or the fear of not complying with federal guidelines will just cause the transit agency or whatever the improving agency is to pick another stop to improve. There is flexibility for constrained areas, but it can be very challenging to navigate. And the easiest thing to do would be to make sure that you have the space to comply with these guidelines. Think it's back over to you, Brett. Do you want me to keep driving?
No, that's, I got it. So you, I think you saw this was sort of an idea that we were kicking around a little bit and Gainesville was really an aha moment that it looked like some other, another, at least one other community had done a similar approach. And so this is that sort of perhaps blunt, but I think appropriate tool to try and make sure that we are not closing off our design options going forward as we maybe go through the endeavors to refine our plans and cross-sections for some of these corridors. And so the proposed approach that I'm contemplating is to change how we measure front setback in the TC one and in a way from how we measure in every other district. So what we would do is we would measure front setback from the curb. We would establish a minimum of fifteen feet from curb. Um, we would establish a minimum of fifteen feet from curb uh, and a maximum of thirty feet from curb. And the minimum of fifteen feet would provide, as you saw from some of those case studies, some flexibility for future street tree planting strips, for future transit infrastructure. Adequate space for on a nice wide sidewalk or non-motorized pathway and some potential flexibility even for private um, outdoor space on that, on that front setback. Maybe it's plantings, maybe it's some outdoor display, maybe it's um, some tables outside of the public right of way. Maybe, maybe it's planters on, in front of the building. I don't know. But establishing that from the curb to the building, we need a certain minimum amount of real estate so that we are not foreclosing opportunities in the future. I want to be clear, this doesn't necessarily answer what happens yet in that fifteen feet of right of way. Um, some of that is public right of way decisions, some of it is private decisions. But at a minimum, it makes sure that we don't end up with a building from some development that might take advantage of the current zero to fifteen-foot setback requirements that would foreclose the ability for us to realize some improvement along one of these corridors that's desired. Um, there are a lot of examples, as you saw from the range, that we have property lines that exceed thirty feet from the curb line. Of course, we cannot require those buildings to be built in the public right of way. So there would be an exception to that fifteen to thirty feet that when that property line is more than thirty feet from the curb, it would have to be a maximum of three-foot setback, keeping it somewhat as close and tight to that corridor as possible. Um, but providing a little bit flexibility for building frontage and private use flexibility on the front of that building. Maybe it's for projections, awnings, maybe it's just for maintenance, who knows? So as always with the work session, no decision to be made here. Really interested in hearing your feedback about this approach. Interesting in hearing other information that might be helpful before you know whether this feels like the right approach or in conjunction with considering this as a potential amendment. Um, and then getting some sense of if, if there is that type of background or information that's, that's desired. Would you like to see that presented as part of this move progressing to a public hearing? Or um, spend a little bit more time on it in a work session or similar?
All right. That was really super helpful. Um, I really appreciate the presentation. So thank you for putting all that together. Who would like to start us off? Commissioner Abrams.
I also saw Commissioner Clark's hand up. I don't know. Um, I actually just have a couple of quick questions. Um, uh, can you help me understand the rationale for the um, beyond the thirty-foot? Uh, why we wouldn't just say zero for setback instead of three feet?
Yeah, uh, we could. Um, even in our downtown, sometimes we offer some um, minimal setback flexibility so that you have just a little bit of flexibility as a building designer. Maybe it's uh, maybe you want to inset some outdoor space off of the sidewalk. Maybe, like I said, you want an awning or a projection that wouldn't be part of the core building. Um, I've, I don't, I can't say I feel strongly about it, but I don't think whether it's a zero to three or zero to five, once you're past thirty feet. I, I think that, I think that one of the this might be sort of getting off topic a little bit, but one of the challenges that I think I have shared with the commission and wrestling with this narrow right of way is the notion of losing the street. Like as buildings get further back, it feels more like what we have now, right? And it doesn't feel to enclose and to um, feel safe and to perhaps slow traffic and to make it more welcoming. At, at thirty feet, um, I think that you're no longer, I don't, I don't want to say that the buildings can't play a role or hurt that role. But part of this is actually relying on things like a planting strip and transit amenities to help provide some of that enclosure separate from buildings. And because we don't have that line delineated to know that it's actually twenty feet or it's actually fourteen feet. Is strictly providing a little bit of flexibility so that if you, as a property owner or designer, find some compelling need that you need some private access on the front of that building, it's there.
Do you mind just pulling the language up again?
Sure, absolutely.
Proposal. Um.
And this is not, yeah, absolutely. But this is not also um, the ordinance yet. One of the things I do wanna, I do wanna identify is that this approach might also result in changes to some of our, our other terms, like how we define setback, how we define front yard. So um, there might be some ripple effects of this approach. It really is looking at measuring front setbacks very differently than we ever have before. I don't think it's, it's, it's appropriate. It's still doing it very uniformly. Um, it is applying that same standard to properties across these corridors. The unique conditions of those properties are going to result in differing effects, but it is, it is um, I would just put forth, I think it's very standard and predictive.
You go, yeah, go back one slide, maybe. Is that where the?
Oh, I'm sorry. And I could pull up some examples of.
Well, yeah, I guess, I guess a couple, a couple of things just quickly are, um, I think in terms of the rationale, it makes sense. It seems like what we could debate is the, the choice of fifteen, thirty and three. And maybe look at those numbers relative to the case studies and the other recommendations and think about massaging that. And then one thing that would help me understand the fifteen and the thirty is to look at existing things that have that setback and just try to understand that scale, um, particularly the thirty, which feels really big. Um, and then I also just wanted to confirm, uh, so the setback, um, whether it's measured from the property line or from the curb is to the face of the building that is most proud. Do we have a um, uh, minimum amount of the facade that needs to be at that plane?
In the TC one, we do.
And can you remind me what that is?
Yes, let me look it up.
Or I can look it up too. I, I thought you knew. I can look it up.
Yeah.
Um, because what I'm also thinking about the, the three-foot buffer is, you know, it's only the part of the building has to come up and not the entire thing. So you could still carve out space for outdoor seating or for awnings or for other things. Um, right? But I, but if we say that ninety-five percent of the building has to come to the front setback, then obviously what I'm, the point I'm making is inaccurate. Um, so I can look it up and I can, yeah. Let y'all know. That's it for me.
Anybody else? Mr. Clark.
Yes, I was just curious, a quick question for staff. Which areas are, uh, or which corridors are we looking at that have the most um, like frontage of concern uh, with the setbacks? So like where we, where there's the least amount of space for, you know, things you mentioned, utilities, whatnot, whatever the city needs to work with.
Definitely stadium. Um, all the corridors, like I said, like all the corridors have points where there are problems. But when you look at stadiums, um, you know, there is a lot of, uh, there's a lot of uh, eight-foot to eleven, twelve-foot. Um, there's a lot of four-foot uh, in the stadium corridor actually. So um, I would say definitely stadium and I'm sorry, I didn't, I just didn't get the data pulled from Maple yet. That's why it wasn't populated in the table. But, but for stadium, all the way from Dexter down to Pauline, um, that's the most constrained corridor.
So also, I was just curious if there's um, data right now on like the average speeds on each of the, the corridors? And then um, and which one might have the highest speeding um, occurrences? And then also, um, yeah, and then just, so that was my thought right now, which if we have any comparison on that and um, sorry, blanked out, but that's it.
I don't have speed, I don't have speed data, but we can see if we have that um, from the, from the Moving Together Plan. Um, both the Washtenaw and the Plymouth uh, corridors are tier-one crash corridors. Um, whereas uh, State Eisenhower and Stadium are tier-one slash or tier-two. So just from a planning, the plan perspective, definitely identified Plymouth and Washtenaw as higher corridors from a safety concern. I wouldn't be surprised if that correlates to speed as well. Um, but we can follow up to see if we have that speed data. I, I don't have it.
It'd be interesting to know just based on the um, the way the drivers are interacting with the narrowness versus wideness. And then also, I'm just curious if there was any um, rationale behind, I know like stadium and a lot of those places mentioned are two lanes. And if narrowing the lanes on stadium is, if there's some logistical constraint or, you know, if, if um, turning, you know, parking in a protected bike lane or something is, is being considered in, instead of trying to do this in the developer via developers parcel by parcel.
Yeah, there, I, I don't know the answer to that, but I also, I, I appreciate that question because part of this is trying to ignore that. So part of this is trying to put together a private development regulation that is a bit agnostic about those decisions going forward because uh, as I said, because I, I don't know the answers to that. I don't know the answers to that for stadium. The timeframe for that yet, or the likelihood of the capital infrastructure to be able to accomplish that. And so part of this is finding a bit of a hedging our bets tool that says when on a parcel-by-parcel basis, we are making land use decisions, what are we going to do to make sure that we're not closing options whenever we get to those decisions as opposed to uh, constraining those decisions maybe further than they already are?
And so the plan be for the city to, to retain some kind of agreement with the developer for using that space? Like will they be expected to keep it open and unused for any other purpose?
So that's also to be determined. So ideally, I would say, yeah, that would be, that would be great. But you're starting to get into public use of private property. So the first step of that really is just kind of preserving the real estate so that if that doesn't, if, if a sidewalk, for example, is not dedicated at the time of a development, um, that at least there's not a building there should the city then be able to bring the capital to build that sidewalk in the future. So it's not, I want to be clear, it's not an automatic, just because we get the space that we will also have the regulatory structure to require those property owners to dedicate feed portions of their property for public use. That's a different, that'll be a subsequent question.
Is that safe then to wonder, just a question? Is there a risk of this just being unused inactive space along the road? If there's no plans to develop it, the developers aren't really going to be putting anything at there. And then my next question on that is going to be, is there anywhere along uh, like stadium where there isn't a sidewalk at the moment? And where, um, wouldn't that be an extra incentive to potentially look at road diets? If we don't have that option on the table of relying on private developers to maybe come along and reserve this in case or, you know, there's a whole lot of contingencies if grant funding comes available, but we'll fund these expansions, all these unknowns that we're sixty years from now. We can be looking at thirty-foot setbacks and making it look more like the corridors that have higher crash rates and higher speeds, which to me is just absolutely absurd. It's just making this policy reinforce the status quo. Uh, developers already have to go to the city to see about ADA compliance and accessibility. So if there's any accessibility concerns, I'm assuming that the staff will have the leeway to address that during that time. And I mean, unless there's some way of like the city, I mean, holding the space open and unused. I, I can, I imagine that's probably not going to be an easy sell to developers and getting into those private public land use. And that's just my comment. I just wanted to get all that out there. Well, that's me else.
I was just gonna follow up with the information that I was asking about, which is the building frontage requirement. So um, there's two categories for lots with, lot widths up to two hundred and fifty feet. It's has to be the entire lot width minus thirty feet or forty-five feet when adjacent to residential zones. And for lots, two hundred and fifty feet or more, it's a seventy-five percent frontage requirement.
Um, okay, Commissioner Sovey and then Commissioner Mills.
I think mine's answered by being maybe unanswered, which is like, is this a public easement or not? Um.
I hope it would be.
Right, but.
But it's not, but I, I just want to be honest. It's not easy for me to sit here and say every development that comes through is going to have to dedicate one or two or five feet to public right of way when we don't have the corresponding plan that says that's where we're gonna end up. This is a step towards that.
Yeah. I guess I'm curious about like the discretion to request that during site planning versus the requirement to do so, like where.
Unlimited. Yeah, a- absolutely. And I will tell you that we, as part of this, we will ask for that. That's part of the goal is to establish those street tree plantings, to establish the, the adequate sidewalk. We will definitely request that. But I, I just, I need to hedge that a little bit. It's not as simple as saying um, because we want a ten-foot sidewalk and there's only four-foot right of way, you just have to give us six feet of your property.
Yeah. And I guess that's from the first case study. Uh, Hank, I'm not sure I saw the page thirty-nine that said, see page, like it said, see page thirty-nine for the constrained right of way. So I'm curious exactly what that one was, because I guess I'm trying to understand with those case studies if any of those are about private property or if those are all within the right of way. Um, because I think that makes a big difference, how much we're comparing a policy that is future planning in the right of way for the space versus us, which is future planning for private development to hold that space. And I think to Commissioner Clark's point, the overall width, I think is a, a larger can, like not having a building there can, can sometimes be just as impactful to that corridor as having a building relative to those amenities. And I know flexi-posts aren't great, but it's a way to make a wider bike lane without moving a curb. Um, for a more economical thing. So maybe to get to my point, one of the data points I'd love to see on the table is curb to curb width for each of these corridors. So like how wide is stadium? How wide is Washtenaw? How wide is Plymouth? Like are they all relatively the same width curb to curb in the public right of way? Like, what's our right of way width? What's our, our curb to curb width? So we just kind of know relative to kind of speed and experience in these corridors, how much wider we might be going. Um, I think would be helpful. And then maybe like another data point, all of our other commercial corridors, minimum ten feet, maximum twenty-five. Um, so versus minimum ten or proposed minimum fifteen, maximum thirty. So we're growing by like five feet and I'm it's almost like a given. It's like, I don't want to expand it further than necessary relative to the overall experience of the corridor. And so I also think about consistency. I know we're measuring property line versus curb, but the more there's consistency between different zoning districts, the more ability there is, especially with comprehensive plan coming up for things to kind of get blanket, like rezoned uh, and strategize in a way that we don't have a lot of non-conformities in the future. So I just feel like consistency between zoning districts allows kind of a refresh maybe of our land use plan that doesn't create non-conformities. So maybe we look at curb to curb everywhere and understand what a translation looks like in D1, D2, C3. If, you know, D1 curb setback is fifteen feet versus D1 property setback is zero feet. It'd be interesting to look at if we updated the whole table, what would that look like? So those are my first thoughts.
Commissioner Mills.
Thanks. I really appreciate the conversation because I've, like, in hearing what other people have had to say, it's helped me think a little bit more here. I Appreciate all the, all the research that went into this. And similarly, like, uh, maybe like. For when we see this overall, having that table to look at at the same time. As the numbers that, that we're discussing would be really useful. My recollection from what you showed, um, Mick Kelly is that. The minimum fifteen seems not crazy, like not all that out of whack. The thirty seems like most of the places, like the numbers given were, I, I, the Gainesville one of twenty seven stands out to me. And so that just seems again, moving towards into the wrong like. I know it is the max, but even so, like allowing for that amount of flexibility here. Seems more than what I think we may want. I think it makes sense. I mean, um, actually, can you remind me of what the setback is now? It's zero to ten or zero to fifteen? Fifteen? I'm reading Commissioner Sovey's lips. Okay. Zero to fifteen. So my sense is saying that. I'm comfortable keeping that and saying. If you already, if, if your setback is on the curb line, which I'm hearing in some places, it is pretty darn close. Or if your property line is on the curb line. Then you need to have at least fifteen and then giving so skip striking B entirely. And kind of having your asterisk, like keeping something like that. That in the situation where it, it, it's right up to it that we allow some additional flexibility, but. Um. So that. In let's, let's imagine the zero, the zero curb line, property line scenario. The fifteen feet is what would be required. And if you want, and then if you want to go an additional three feet, okay, like that's on your private property. But like, I don't, I don't know that we need to set a maximum from the curb. From the curb line. Um, in the situation where things are right up close, like I don't, I wouldn't want to give any more flexibility to that. So. And I, again, I don't know that the fifteen is the right number based on the quickly, like my recollection of quickly going through the table, maybe twelve. Is again, we're talking constrained environment. We know it's not going to be twelve consistently across there, because sometimes it's. We got sixty feet um, that's even in the public. Um, but, but I, I, I like the idea. Of making sure that we're at it actually where the curb line and the property line are coincident that. That there's some space. So that's just my. That's quasi coherent-ish. The question that I have is in the spaces where we've got gigantic setbacks. Where the curb line between the curb line and the property line is fifty feet. What's allowed to happen in that? Space. Like. If I develop a property on that and I now, again, what, what our code says is that it's. If I've got fifty feet from the curb to my property line, I can either do it at. The fifty, like at the zero property line, so fifty feet from that curb or. Sixty five feet from the curb. Like, that's the way that we give. If I wanted to have outdoor dining, can I do that between my, my property and the curb? Or like, what's the, how does that work?
And that's what we allow downtown. Um, I think it would be rethinking. Um, applying a similar model elsewhere in the city, but. We, you know, typically we don't allow you to build things. In the right of way. Um, there are times even when you have a. Let me think of an example. Uh, there is a, a ramp access to the Domino. Pizza on the corner of Stadium or South State and Packard. That it extends into the right of way in order to meet the grade requirements for that ramp. So even something as small as that would, we require a license, but. Across downtown, we allow private sort of claiming licensing of our. Public sidewalk space. I don't think it would be any different in um, these other corridors. But I would say that it wouldn't be very nice to sit there unless you had some of those other amenities.
Sure. Yeah. Well, and I'm thinking like, that's gonna be. In my imagination or my, um, yeah, is that like, this is when you're redesigning, you know, a good stretch of that. And you're having, you know, the seventy five percent that Commissioner Abrams talked about, like seventy five percent of that building is right then on that. Fifty foot line from the curb. Um, I mean. Anyway, I, I, I would want to make sure that. I'm glad that there is a possibility for that activation. And I mean, those are the, I don't want to make it so that we have to like. That out, that we're accommodating. Outdoor dining along the entirety of these corridors. Because that just doesn't make sense. Like if you want that, like we should have, you should pick the place that's got the gigantic. Setback from the road right now, like that's the space, space for it. So I don't think that we need to do that. I do think allowing for the minimum. And that's why I, I, you know, whether that number is twelve or fifteen. Or fifteen or twelve or eight, like again, I certainly I, I can have been convinced that like the minimum number should be at least eight. Based on the accessibility, but I don't know. I defer to others and that, and like having that table, that table was amazingly helpful. Thank you for putting that together. That's, so that's my two cents or more than two cents.
I just want to jump real quick for the sidewalk for dining and things. Sidewalk permits are reviewed by the building department for accessibility and clearances and things. So you can't just. You shouldn't and you can't just throw your furniture out there. They're actually reviewed in case anybody, just to offer that up.
For people listening, amazing.
They receive a permit, but, but that's a good example, like. When, when that public right of way is constrained, where you only have a passable sidewalk, there's no space to be able to use it for that purpose then.
Um, so I was curious about some of those best practice examples in the chart. And I'm, I must be, I'm about Eugene Oregon. I'm wondering what I'm missing because I'm looking at their municipal code for transit oriented development overlay zone. And it's telling me that in, um, it's nine point four five in their code. That there's a fifteen foot maximum setback for buildings on their transit corridors. And I'm curious if there were any factors that like were looked into that maybe that didn't correlate. To what we're considering transit oriented development or what the distinction might be there, the, the chart, the, with that and just some clarity.
Oh, their guidelines are from twenty twenty from October of twenty twenty. Um, sometimes it takes a while to move from a guideline to implementation. It's possible they haven't updated their code. I'm not sure. We started by looking at their uh, street design standards documents. And these were the, the street types that they. Had created and um, the. The space allocation that they recommend.
And I would just add, we didn't do any correlation of zoning their zoning district with this. That's something we can look at. It's also possible that their transit oriented districts are more akin to their downtown street typologies. We are not using their downtown street typologies. We are using sort of a more core or base typology. So. And we can look at that though. We, we didn't do that overlay with their zoning.
If you could take a look at that, because they do have a recently updated transit oriented development zoning that does look pretty comparable to ours. And I think maybe it just got overlooked because it wasn't in those documents or something, but. And then looking at their other, and I'm also a little bit hesitant with like, you know, just. Um, I think it might be helpful and more context on the industry organizations that were looked at with like the transit um. Transportation engineers. I mean, they're, that's a group that are going to be pretty in favor of wide setbacks in general, just to mean they're looking at car movement. They still use their, you know, through fairs like their measurement. Um. I just, there's other organizations that are, you know, doing, um, and that have been, I mean, the national, the um. Federal transportation has been giving grants out for transit oriented development. And there's also like Institute for Transportation Development Policy. There's other, uh, I guess industries standards that I might. Think might provide useful context as well as just the traffic engineers. And just wanted to throw that out there and especially just making sure that we're really digging into what the zoning category comparables are.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Uh, this is Hank.
We definitely are.
Yeah, we looked extensively at the. Um, National Association of City Transportation Officials or NACTO guides. We looked at their Transit Street Design Guide, um, Urban Street Design Guide and. Uh, other resources that they use case studies that they reference. They go just shy of recommending frontage zones and amenity zones. What they do specify is a minimum pedestrian clear zone and the minimum pedestrian clear zone. That's that middle space that shouldn't have anything in it. It shouldn't share space with bike racks. It shouldn't share space with trees. It should just be for. Just before um, people walking, people wheeling themselves. Was twelve feet and eight to twelve feet, but. Uh, the eight feet is for residential areas that are not really what um, were. You know, or okay, so they say eight to twelve feet in downtown and commercial areas, but. In other areas of their guide, they really aired toward twelve feet. So I think that. That is their preferred and that was the recommended minimum. Um, one thing that I wanted to bring up here that um, I know we have some folks who uh, work in landscaping and so forth. One thing that came forward from the Grand Rapids Guide, uh, their street space design guidelines. From twenty nineteen is um, optimal space for tree planting. One thing that really will help. To narrow the um, design speed of corridors to slow down traffic is to have a tree wall. And you have to have adequate space to do that. So the minimum space that was uh. Kind of recommended in that guide and also repeated in other guides was four feet. And starting at five to six feet, you can allow for different types of trees. Maybe trees that get bigger and taller, uh, that rise above and create like a nice canopy that also don't interfere with. Your urban retail. Um, one thing that there, there is a uh. Just some Michigan Association of Planning seminars that I've sat into, whether at the MAP conference or elsewhere. Or they have people present on urban retail and the things that hinder or help urban retail, which is something we also talk about. And one of the reasons why I know that people on this board and elsewhere really do want active first floor uses. Is for that urban retail, one of the things that hinders its success is when you have smaller trees that have canopies that crowd the front. Of the building. So if you're looking at uh, the uh, access board guidelines. Uh, basically has a minimum five foot width, clear width for walking. And if you have less than that, if you have four feet, then every two hundred feet, you have to have a cutout. Um, and you need four feet minimum for. Certain types of smaller urban trees. That's already eight feet just to accommodate those two things. And um, in downtown environments, uh, this is something that, you know, Brett and I talked about and. We've also had a lot of great staff discussions while um. Preparing this and thinking about this is. In downtown environments, it's really a. Kind of like a war for the street space. Um, you have bicyclists who are. You know, they want bike parking and uh, people want parklets, but that's where you have limited on-street parking. On-street parking is also a buffer for pedestrians. You have transit space, but transit requires for really excellent transit stops. A lot of room. Um. There, there's an incredible amount of things that people want out of their street space. And the reason why they don't usually get it is because they don't, they don't, they don't have the room. I think when we're looking at um, basically retrofitting these, these corridors. Saying you can have it all and we're also going to buffer you at a minimum with. Adequate space to have the types of trees that could narrow the, the roadway and create a nice walking environment, which is. Really essential to the success of the zone um, is important. So I just want to bring up them, that landscaping component.
Thank you, because I was just about to say something about that as well. So, um. So uh, three feet is like I did three feet once. It's super skinny. It's really hard to pull off. Um, four feet, I think is like total minimum, five feet is more comfortable in terms of being able to get a real deal canopy tree that gets tall enough to have the high branching. And I just want to say a thing or two about street trees. Um, I was at a conference um, last fall where they were looking at temperature. And um, it's not just the shade from buildings. The shade of trees pools in a way that the shade of buildings does not, because it's like this living thing that is, that is cycling through air. And the, the experience of the street um, is just so different. And I think of some of the buildings that U of M has recently put in where they don't. Um, put in street trees like at North Quad along State Street, my old office used to be there. And oh my gosh, that thing just bakes on that side. And um, I just think it's not as comfortable. And if you can have, like, if we have four or five feet, like, if you put a, um, a bike hoop there. Then you can get two spaces I, uh, for one bike hoop you can have, because that is a minimum of four feet. And if you're really going to put it in there, then it's more comfortable to have it be five. Then there's bus shelter too. Yeah, to make that whole transit experience nicer. So I think fifteen seems, seems. Uh, seems pretty comfortable. I like the, the wider sidewalk, because then you can walk side by side more easily. I think downtown. Like minimum now, if you're developing anything, it has to be six and that's, that's pretty skinny actually. If you're trying to like have stuff in the, in that right of way amenity area as well. So um. Uh, the other thing is I just did some really quick measuring off of the city's GIS. And like Washington Street where you have. Um, like Zola's and, and you know, some of these other um, places that have things in the right of, like where they have dining there, that's like seventeen feet. Just to give you some kind of context of activity happening within that zone. Main Street, it's like twenty three feet from the, the um, the curb to the building. So th- those are, obviously those are different streets in terms of like how fast they are, you know, um, how many uh, lanes of traffic. It's speed limits, all those things are different, but just in terms, I think all of us have walked down those corridors to get a sense of just the room. In between the building and the curb. So I think fifteen feet seems um. To me, kind of a minimum. Um, I think seventeen would be great. Um. To be able to just have a little bit more room to have some of that activity happen. Um, uh, whether it's like right in front of your building or in between in that amenity zone. I actually really like the idea of measuring from the back of the curb. I think it makes it more consistent. I think there were so many weird places when I was looking through the GIS of where property lines happen to fall. Some of them was, were at the curb, some of them were in the street, some of them were in the middle of the sidewalk, some of that, like it was all over the place. And so I think it's more consistent to just have it measured from the back of the curb, because that's really the thing that is driving. How we experience the street as we move down. So for me, I think that's a really nice adaptation for these corridors to think about it in that way. Um. Let's see, I've got some other notes here. Um, and you know, in these other zones in terms of being consistent, you know, that's from the property line, not from the back of the curb. You know, so it, it's not quite, it's not apples to apples in that way. Um, and I, you know, I'd be open to having it shift, you know, to that all the way through the city, but I could also see these TC one. Corridors having their own way of measuring, because that's really where we have these issues um, happening the most. Um, I think that's. I think that's all I had. Mr. Leonard.
Yeah, just um, Commissioner Clark, you asked about some of the curb to curb dimensions. They really vary along the corridors, um, but a couple of snapshots here for you, the, the widest um, sort of just south of. Uh, South State, just south of Eisenhower. Including the median outside curb, outside curb, that's a hundred and twenty two feet. Uh, these aren't engineering numbers. Um, next you have Washtenaw sort of around the um. That same screenshot that I provided near sort of near that uh, auto body shop. Um, that's about a seventy two foot uh, curb to curb dimension. Uh, Plymouth Road. Uh, or no, next would be Stadium of in front of the post office. That's about a sixty four foot. Uh, curb to curb and then Plymouth somewhere in the vicinity, nah. Uh. Think maybe somewhere around the water tower, give or take is about a fifty eight foot curb to curb. So the narrowest curb to curb, which also makes sense, because when you look at some of this curb to property lines, the Plymouth corridor has some of the widest expanses of that real estate. the Plymouth Quarter has some of the widest expanses of that real estate, uh, existing now. All right, so while you're all thinking a little bit, some of the additional information I've heard is maybe bringing some more into the case study, some of the ordinance, zoning ordinance overlays and the like. Maybe some more detail about where some of the standards reference context-constrained factors, whether it's ITE, whether it's NACTO, whether it's access, the access board. Uh, speeds, uh, was, uh, speed data for these corridors. And maybe going into safety a little bit more than just the high level that I referenced in the plan, um, was something that was identified. And then, so far, I'm hearing the approach seems sound, but constrain the outside possibility, so it has to be closer to 15 feet as well. I do, I, I guess I do want to acknowledge that by trying to do this in this method, we are not only trying to find the right number for maybe transit sidewalk throughway and planting strip, but it might also be trying to accommodate in all ages bike act, bike network, which might be a raised bike, raised off-road bike road on a corridor. That's the problem here. We don't have that stuff detailed out, right? And we want to find an interim measure, perhaps, that we can not foreclose those opportunities. So I would just say, maybe that is a slight plug for airing on a 15-foot versus a 12 or an eight-foot, so that when, when we are trying to maybe realize an all-ages bike lane on Plymouth, that is going to increase the opportunity, because that's probably going to be realized more like maybe an off-road pathway, more akin to what we have on Washina now. So just, but that has the downside, right, of setting those buildings back. That's why I think the planting strip is really important to help establish a, a street, street wall.
Commissioner White?
Uh, so I think I want to just echo a couple of things that I heard. One, I think 30 feet from the curb is too much. And I would strongly, um, second, I don't know if Commissioner Mills actually intended to say this this way, but I think she did, striking that from your proposed, um, ordinance. And I think 15 seems to be the, the consensus in, of some of the folks who have spoken, though I, I wasn't clear on whether, okay, so 10. That's what I was going to say. I didn't know if, if 15 was going to be the, the new maximum on, on those sort of spaces. And I think the thing that I'm, again, struggling with is this, to me, still feels like a land bank, right? Like, we're asking developers to hold this land in trust, and that maybe sometime in the future, the city is going to adopt some kind of, um, approach to get this land. And so we don't want anyone to develop in it, because potentially, we need to have it available to do some things. And, um, so, so I just, like, can we, can we honestly speak about that? Or are we, are we not honestly speaking about that? And then, um, with regard to the, the other thing that is confusing to me is, I understand planning's role in this, but what is missing is where is transportation, traffic, and engineering? And are we going to adopt or see, or is there a pipeline where we're going to see a street design standard across the city? Uh, such that when a new development or a new redevelopment happens, like Main Street, are they going to adopt this structure to say, okay, we've got a five-foot frontage in front of the building? We've got this, this 12-foot pedestrian way? And then we've got another eight to 12 feet where we can put in a bike lane? Because I don't, I don't see that happening in the redevelopment of roads. Like, just take Silo Church, for instance. They're, they're not changing anything in Silo Church. They're adding some things. They're putting in one pedestrian island, but they're not changing the curbs. So, you know, except for that one place where that pedestrian island is, once you cross it, it's a Speedway, like, all the way to Main Street. And I can record for you the number of times that people try to do about 70 to 100, maybe 120 down our street from Seventh to Main. And they do it quite often, because it's a highway. So I just, I feel like this is out of, I feel like there's too much weight being placed on TC1 to accomplish something that the city hasn't decided to do citywide. And I just want to, I think, register my complaint about that. I think this is inappropriate. I, I would love to, I know it's not, I know it's not the standard of planning to send notes back to council, because I asked you about that very early, and you said, "That is not how we do it. Your votes are the way that we do it." But my vote doesn't have my voice in it, which is to say, this is inappropriate. The, the, the policymakers need to instruct all departments of the city to come together and to design what we want to see. This piecemeal approach is not going to accomplish what we want. And it is having the unfortunate effect of slowing down the progress of TC1 across the city, which means we're locking in development that we don't want and is not in our future. But here we are, May, six months since this was passed in December, talking about this while developments are being proposed to planning that will lock in certain developments for 25 to 30 years. And so I know there's no way to put that in a vote, but I just want to register it. I just, I just think this is a monumental waste of our time. And I think we have so many more important things to work on for the city. Chief among those things, figuring out how we're going to house people. So, but I do appreciate your work. You all are excellent folks, and you've communicated very well. And, uh, yeah, so I just wanted to share those thoughts.
Mr. Leonard?
Yeah, I want to share, I want to echo some of what Commissioner White said. And I also want to frame it a little bit. Part of that's our responsibility. So we adopt the city's comprehensive plan. And one of the plans that we adopted was the Moving Together Transportation Plan, which I think is a really fantastic document. But I think one of the frustrations that I, and I am going to suggest that's part of your frustration, that Commissioner White is just naming, is that it didn't go far enough. That plan, um, identified some corridors that would be great to accomplish things. And then the plan also has a lot of great examples of different treatments and ideas and concepts that can be applied in different areas. That plan doesn't go so far as to say, let's take these concepts and applying to these corridors, or this corridor should be, um, yeah, yeah, we want this bike lane on this corridor. And so I do think that there is a gap in our collective city vision for that. And I, I just want to name it. Part of that's on the planning documents that we proffer. Part of that's on the resources available. That said, I, as, as I started with this, I, I am trying to find my best navigation of that condition that we were all in. And I think there is a tension between development that is going to happen on these corridors at some pace, sometimes fast, sometimes slow. And I think that is the conversation that we had at the Planning Commission table, where I think you were hearing a resistance from me to try to sort of move forward on other corridors, because we have these things to address. More and more, I, I just want to name, I want to name it. I feel like I'm in the minority of that. I was hearing from Planning Commission, no, we got to get this stuff rezoned as quickly as possible, because it is a backstop to a development typology, as Commissioner White was talking about, that we don't see in the future of our city. And TC1 is not perfect, but it is different from the zoning framework that exists in these corridors today. That can happen. This, however, I do think is a potential tool that takes, tries to wrestle with that problem, that we don't have all of those corridors designed and labeled and planned, how we envision them to be long-term. And it imperfectly, so imperfectly, does, I think, land bank property, so that in the future, if we decide that we only have four feet here, it'd be really nice to have eight feet, so we can improve that transit stop. Or we'd like to convert the sidewalk into a non-motorized pathway. It just gives us some flexibility. It doesn't answer the question of private property. And I, that could never happen, in which case, I think both Commissioner Sauvay and Commissioner White should have said, then we're just sort of land banking property for what? And I can't sit here and promise you in five years that we're going to have the capital investment to take on all of these corridors in the ways that you might prioritize them, um, because there's just, we don't, one, we don't have enough money to do all of that. And two, there's a lot of balance needs that we're trying to address. So I just want to echo, I think, a lot of what Commissioner White was saying. And I want to, this idea, I don't think is, solves it. But I think it's, it's a step. It is a bit of a placeholder. And then the last piece of this is, I think this is something that we can advance as part of our comprehensive plan. I think as part of that is we can take the next steps to start linking, maybe where that transportation plan fell short, and start plugging in some of those features. I want to be clear, that's probably not doing designs for every corridor in the city. But maybe we can do some categorization that builds on the Moving Together Plan with some typical cross-sections. So we have a few more steps towards knowing, no, we never envisioned Stadium is going to have an off-street bike lane. And therefore, we're never going to need 20 feet there. So that doesn't need, need to happen. I just want to be honest and name, this is sort of like hedging our bets in the context of those frustrations that I share. I think Commissioner White just really well articulated it.
Commissioner Clark?
I'll keep it short, because I've already talked before. Um, but I just wanted to ask, um, and say, maybe it might be useful to get some more information from where planning and transportation have overlapped on the, like, on the bike paths, being whether on or off-road is really the objective. And I just, you know, using every tool that is, uh, to be frank, not like policing and right now for public safety is a good thing. And designing for, you know, visible active streets is, should be a really important thing. And if, I just would want to see more discussion on the overlap between planning and transportation before we made it, like, a statement that it might be a goal to have an off-road multimodal path. Because I know personally, if I'm going to bike somewhere at night, I would much rather be, you know, on the side of the road in a highly visible area than I would be in a, you know, shaded pathway that's concealed between a large vacant, you know, 30, 15-foot space, um, not visible from the road. And so I just wanted to kind of keep that in mind, that like, there are some considerations. Paths off the road are wonderful for, you know, recreation, especially if you're going daytime out with the family. Um, as far as transportation, sometimes the most visible, shortest path is what you need. And I don't necessarily see it as an objective in a plate, in a corridor that we're supposed to be getting people efficiently from point A to point B, taking cyclists, oh, um, so they're not visible from the road, and pedestrians, so they're not visible from the road, because there's a wall of trees. I mean, trees are great, but not having that visibility then just kind of re-centers cars as the road. And I just want to, you know, and again, I'm not being prescriptive here. I'm just kind of opening this up for some information I might like to see in the future, would be the weighing of that. And I know that I'm veering into, uh, transportation planning and away from zoning. But I think that's kind of where we get to a little bit when we make decisions based off, like, with these setbacks, by kind of guessing on what might be available in the future. Um, and then just wanted to throw that out there. And that's, yeah, sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Dish.
Thank you. It's been really helpful to listen to everything that everyone's been saying. Because I, I definitely feel like the expertise sits more with most of you than it does with me. I think, uh, what I want to underscore is what Mr. Leonard started out by saying, which is that all of the changes that we're thinking about on TC1 corridors are a long-term gain, game. And so is the shift to reducing 50% of vehicle miles traveled. And so is the idea that we can, and so are the potential capital investments we might make on these corridors over the next decade, two decades to three decades. And the various mechanisms that we're trying to figure out in order to have the capital to do that. And so, um, whereas, I know that it feels, um, silly to talk about space when we don't have a clear plan. We don't have a right-of-way plan in the transportation plan. I think that there is very strong sentiment on the council that, towards two things that don't sit easily with each other. But it would be great if we could reconcile them, and it would be fantastic if this tool is a way to do so. But there is strong sentiment that TC1 is better than the existing zoning. And undesirable projects get to come in on the existing zoning. And so the short game is, let's stop that. Let's get TC1 in place, so that we aren't knocking our heads against a string of undesirable projects on Plymouth and on Washina. But at the same time, there is the desire to protect the ability to have, to have enough space for that war that Ms. Kelly talked about, right? So that we can, you know, so that it isn't a zero-sum game between the people who care about pedestrians, the people who are worried about urban heat, and the people who wish we could get bikes and pedestrians and slow down traffic and cool people off as they walk or bike. And so, um, I share, uh, though, again, I, I'm speaking cautiously, because, um, to be honest with you, I actually don't know how we measure setbacks right now. So I'm a little confused, and I will talk to the planning staff later, and they can help me understand this 101 stuff. And I feel, I'm sorry, I apologize that I'm, there are things that I still haven't been on Planning Commission long enough to know. But, um, I, I do think that I share the, the feeling of trepidation about 30 feet maximum. That feels like, wow, that's a lot of space. And I understand what Commissioner Gibranle was saying, that I might be surprised by how much space there actually is in some of the parts of town that I like to walk. So I, I'm, I'm feeling inclined towards the intervention that Commissioner Mills made early on about, could we get rid of the part B? So, but I, but I'm also nervous for us to, I, I'm nervous about, about, uh, setting the minimum so low that we create a zero-sum game between the various things that people want out of the space. So I'm saying that, I'm trying to express to you where I think council was coming from. And I do feel the need to say that I'm sorry that council said one thing when we rezoned Stadium, and now we're kind of like, oh, I'm sorry, we didn't fully mean that. We see the urgency of moving forward. So I feel a little bit like apologizing to you for that, because I think some of you are annoyed that things are going back and forth, or you're getting mixed messages from council. But I'm also trying to clarify the mixed message, which is, shoot, we really do need to zone expeditiously TC1, because it's better than what's here. But we also need to protect the ability to get all the amenities we want out of this space. So, um, it's, this isn't easy. So I'm just trying to be as clear as I can for speaking for my colleagues and appreciating what you've all said.
Commissioner Mills?
Super quick, and I was thinking of raising my hand before Commissioner Dish just acknowledged that the discussion between curb cuts and, and property lines and setbacks is not our normal thing. And I think it would be really helpful for our discussion going forward if we have one of Ms. Delio's or somebody else's in the staff, like, what she calls her terrible diagrams, that are actually, like, help us understand what this looks like when the, when the distance between the curb and the property line is two feet, and what it looks like when it's 50 feet, and what it and what it looks like when it's fifty feet, and what it looks like on the average in a different, you know, along the corridor. Because I think that that will help maybe some people who are struggling with the, like, how this is a change. Put that in perspective. And you did it a little bit with your, with the images that you took of those particular corners. But I think actually, like shading, like, here is where we're talking about the possible frontline being. And if possible, it'd be even, even if it's just blocks, that's like, you know, squares, that's cool. If possible, to superimpose it on some parts of that corridor that we know. I think that showing what this requires, this may be require moving things up because we don't allow zero-line setback in some situations. And, and anyway, I don't want, want it to be a whole bunch of work, but I think that there's probably lots of people, maybe other council members who might be confused by the conversation. And just a couple of simple diagrams might help.
Commissioner Sauvay.
I'll just add right-of-way to that diagram. Because I think right-of-way is a really important one that the diagrams that we're seeing are most street drawing diagrams are within the right-of-way. And what we're talking about is private land. And what we're asking is that private development and the UDC make it more comfortable for street design to stay the same. Because we're going to just do it in the private development instead of hinged to an appropriate width for a transit corridor, and then make street design show up in the capital and not do a land bank and put that money in the street. Build a second curb for protected bike lane. We saw DDA do it downtown. It's possible to redesign your streets while maintaining curves. And council is not on a united front on this either. This is not a straight vote, and it was not a straight discussion. So I think that in both parties, we're having friction into, is, is this necessary? Is this appropriate? And is this a priority and to what scale? So I just put that out there too, like, not all of council wants to see this either. Like, council, I think all of council wants to see TC1, not all of council cares about these setbacks. I think there's a squeaky few. And I think, I think they don't understand right-of-way versus property line either. And design guidelines, and I really appreciate the question of show us design, street design guidelines, but show us their UDC, show us their zoning, and what they're actually doing on the private side of things would be really helpful. So I do want to reinforce that, understanding what outcomes we're seeing from a UDC side. Because I guess my worst sit-case scenario is that we make this, like, thirty feet is sixty extra feet of width to our ideal narrow scenario for pedestrian areas. And I don't want to see sixty extra feet of width to make it comfortable for us not to redesign our streets. And I think a lot of the time, we talk about trying to make things, you know, uncomfortable to pressure improvement. And I think it's time to make the city uncomfortable to pressure improvement too. Because if they're going to put that capital into being able, I, I guess, my, my last thought, being able to stitch enough parcels together to have all access bikeways along private development is even longer than a fifty-year bond or capital campaign to do it in the right-of-way. It's kind of insane to me to think about us, like, doing a parcel assembly of easements to do all access bikeway in private development along these corridors. That's a reach. And so I, I like, yeah, let's write the council, let's write transit. But I, I'd rather pinch this and push, push the pressure. Because I think what we're seeing, and you know, incentives, carrots and sticks. And this doesn't feel like a carrot in any way. And we're not seeing a lot of TC1 proposals. And I don't think this is going to help.
Commissioner Hammerstein. Thanks. I was planning on raising my hand at some point to say, or to request exactly what Commissioner Mills requested, and what I think Commissioner Abrams requested way back like an hour ago. I, I think, I'm this, I'm struggling with this. I think when I think about all of these four corridors and whichever ones we might even talk about next, they all feel so different, and I'm just struggling with visualizing what this looks like. So I think having the diagrams, and I was thinking about Alexis's diagrams too, like, having something that just shows like, what, what would this look like on various sections of Stadium, of Plymouth, of Washtenaw, of State? Because, I mean, one thing I think I also heard Commissioner Mills say is, can we not sort of look at this parcel by parcel? And I think I thought maybe at one point, like, was this going to be something that was adjustable? Like, if your property line or setback, and frankly, I don't, I could also use a refresher on like, what all of these things actually are and where they're measured from. But you know, if, if you're, if, if there is only a certain amount of, of width, and we need fifteen feet, but we only have, you know, like, eight feet, then like, your max would be, or your, your maximum would be fifteen feet. But if there's like, all of this room, then it would, so it was like, it was sort of a just, like, an if-then scenario. And maybe, Mr. Leonard, this was sort of like the blunt force treatment that you had described in the beginning, where, but I just, I'm struggling with how this, these same numbers would be applicable across all four corridors. So I think for me, it would help to just see it visually, like, in a bird's eye view, like this one. And I guess I would also just sort of, based on this conversation, like, to formally request that we de-prioritize this and re-prioritize the actual rezoning of Plymouth and Washtenaw. Because, you know, as Commissioner Sauvay said, like, we're not seeing maybe any requests for TC1 zoning properties, like, on the two that we rezoned. But we're seeing things coming to Plymouth that we know we don't want. And so I'm just getting increasingly concerned that, that that stuff's going to happen before we have time to, to do it. And so, I mean, I, I would, I would love to keep, keep worrying about this in those rezoning, but not to the detriment of, you know, pushing those to next year.
Can I just walk through just a quick, I, I think, I just want to sort of set the stage. I, I get when you're asking about the diagrams, I'm not doing this in place of that. But, so this is the Stadium Corridor. This is a Planet Fitness. I don't know if you're familiar with that building. I think there's McDonald's on the side, and across the street, there's an office building with like an orthodontist in it. Probably many of us have experienced that. So what you're seeing here is the curb, you're, you're seeing the curb-to-curb. So for that Planet Fitness building, just typically what we do is we measure setbacks from the property line. So that's with this very faint red line that I hope you can see my cursor's on it right here. So across all of our zoning districts, whenever we're measuring setbacks, we measure from the property line. So whether it's zero to fifteen in TC1, or zero to five in a D1, or it is twenty-five feet or an average established setback in residential district, we are always measuring setback in our current districts from the property line. So in the case of this circumstance here, the setback of this building is approximately thirty-eight feet from property line to the face of the building. So under this scenario, we would, instead of measuring setbacks from the property line, we would measure from this, the curb line. So in that circumstance, if it was a maximum or a minimum of fifteen feet, the building could not be placed closer to than about this point on that property. Because the right-of-way here is approximately nine feet. That means that it would have an effective six-foot of private property would have to remain open. If there was a maximum of thirty feet, it would be roughly ten feet closer to the street than it exists now. So that is one example of how we currently measure setbacks. And under the TC1 currently, it is zero to fifteen. So that building would either have to be, that building could be located right here with a nine-foot wide right-of-way, which is not going to provide adequate space for a six-foot wide sidewalk, let alone wider, and an adequate tree planting strip to get that enclosure. So if, I think that was the concern that was raised at the council table, is that when that site plan comes and it meets the zero-foot setback, and it comes to the planning commission, you have no mechanisms to say, man, it'd be really great if you just move that back five feet so we could get a street tree planting strip there and maintain a nine-foot wide sidewalk. And so, so that's just an exercise over how setbacks are currently exercised. And again, I, I'm hearing it about some more diagrams. We can explore the maps. I did ask to sort of do some calculations of this. Or do I S team just doesn't have that capability to sort of measure on average what this right-of-way is across the whole corridor? But maybe we could explore some sort of like buffer lines, like we did with the TC1. Like, what is a line fifteen feet off of this look like on those sites? So there's just a couple of questions. I just wanted to provide at least one example of visual of some of the things that we're talking about.
There was somebody that had their hand raised. Yeah, Commissioner Dish.
Yeah, it was me, because I wanted to say that there is a desire on council to re-prioritize zoning the un, the currently unzoned corridors. And so the discussion that we're having now I think is being proposed as relatively compatible with that reprioritization. But I'm not sure about that, Mr. Leonard.
I would agree with that. The long-term plan of identifying cross-sections across these corridors and designing those, let alone other quarters across the city, I don't think would be compatible with a more expeditious zoning of those corridors.
Commissioner Clark.
Um, I was just wondering, for reference on that last draw, image, Brett, could you put that up again? I was trying to gauge a sense of scale on it. And how many lanes that section of Stadium, is that, that's where the orthodontist is? Am I standing correctly in that area?
Yep.
Okay. And then how many lanes is that road? So it's like, there's one in the middle, and then is that three or two on each side?
You've got a turn lane, you've got two travel lanes on each side and bike lanes on street.
Okay. And so is the entirety of Stadium, that five-lane setup? I'm struggling to recall, and remember down, further down, I think they changed it.
It's, it's dieted from Pauline to around Seventh. But from Pauline to Dexter, sort of where it converts into Maple. It is a full two-travel lane, turn lane configuration.
So is there a drawback to having the whole road consistent in that same design? And like, isn't that, isn't this the setback thing we're, we've been talking about all night? Kind of, again, trying to solve a traffic problem using zoning? Because where I'm struggling is just like the consistency of the road changing how many lanes. Is there a reason we haven't made the whole thing consistent one design?
I would guess that the traffic volumes, when they, when the road diet was done between Seventh and Pauline, didn't support that road diet extending all the way to Jackson, Dexter. But I, I don't know. My, so I think that there was probably, that was probably about the same time we experienced road diets on Packard, on Jackson, Jackson, Dexter coming into town. So I, I don't know the details, but I know that that whole corridor was redesigned and reconstructed about the same time. I think streetlights were added, some sidewalk gaps were filled, some pedestrian refuge islands were added all at the same time. I think that the reconfiguration from Seventh to Pauline also was a road diet.
So with the bike lane there, if we wanted trees, wouldn't there be some, I mean, maybe bumpouts or bollards or some kind of design mechanisms there? And then, I guess I, I'm just struggling with the, with this, on why there isn't enough space in the road. And I think we've already covered that, so I won't, I won't belabor the point.
If, if I knew that we could get rid of a lane here, I would a hundred percent agree. But that's the issue. I don't have that surety with the long view that we won't want real estate outside that curb line to help meet that, all of those goals.
I actually worked on the, the road diet part of it back in, back in 2012. And I did all the street tree plantings for that section. And I think it was like, that's all residential down there. And then once it got commercial, then the traffic just increased a whole lot. And I didn't work on any of it, because there, there was nothing, there was nothing for me to do, really. And in the commercial part, because there was so little space, you know, they added the, the street lamps and stuff like that there. But the, the seventh part, we put in all new street trees in there and did all kinds of things with green infrastructure and stuff like that. So, but that's primarily, it, it's all residential in that area. So that, that's my recollection of kind of how that, how that went down. Granted, I think that, you know, things, we're interpreting things differently now, I think, in some ways too. But there's just a lot, there's a decent amount of traffic in that, in that commercial area compared to the, the residential section. This is my recollection of that.
And do, does the two lanes help with that? If there's a bottleneck, just out of curiosity, if we studied that at all?
This, do the, do the two things help with what?
Yeah, have we done any, like, what recent traffic studies on, like, having a portion of the road being two lanes, and then we're changing the corridor, so residential will be on the whole thing? I'm just curious if like, was that kind of thinking out loud, loud there about what, again, I guess we're veering into transportation planning rather than zoning? So.
Which we have a lot of opinions about.
Mick Kelly, did you have a response to that, that you wanted to get in? Or was this a different point?
It was in a response to Commissioner Clark.
Why don't you go ahead then?
Sure. I just wanted to bring up something that, you know, maybe this is obvious, but maybe not. But as we're talking about transit corridors, bus-only lanes are a really nice amenity to have when you're looking at fifteen-minute transit service. Bus lanes are typically wider than your average general-purpose lane. So instead of ten to eleven feet, you might be looking at twelve to fourteen feet. You might want to have transit islands that extend into the roadway. You might want to have a wider bike lane, because the bike lane that's there is, it looks like it's just has a striped buffer. So there are a lot of things, just like the competition that happens on the sidewalk, reclaiming space for those sidewalk purposes by taking them from the road in addition to being expensive and very long-term, means that you lose the things that you want on the road. So sometimes that means landscape median in the future. Sometimes it means the bus lanes. But the, the space that looks like it's there, once you start looking at an actual capital program for, okay, we've got the money, we're going to make this nice, that space evaporates really, really quickly. And in particular, when you look at transit amenities, they, they, they take their fair share of right-of-way, which is why, one of the reasons why we generally don't see them, because they are just, that they use a lot of space, and then people are required to justify that, that space that's being taken, and it creates a lot of culture wars. But when you're, you're looking at these right-of-ways, I would just encourage you to, for example, subtract twenty-eight feet for bus-only lanes if they were bidirectional. Or to think about what type of space a shared bike-bus lane might take, or a combination of a upgraded bikeway, or maybe bidirectional bikeway with transit amenities. And the space on street, it does start to evaporate. That was, that was the point I wanted to make.
Thanks. Commissioner Dish. Yeah, no, that was a no, okay. I just would like to say one other thing, and that is, I looked more deeply into how Seattle is doing this, and they, they are, they, they have, they have these visions of, of their corridors, but they also have this land bank thing. They're doing exactly that, where they have easements. You just, you automatically get an easement set up based on like, how far back you are. I don't know if it's I don't know if it's from curb or property line or how there, I didn't look at, at that portion of it. But I know we're not the only ones that are struggling with this. Um, and so that's, that's how they were doing it is, is, uh, is essentially asking for easements, um, in those areas to be. And that's, I would assume probably what we would do here is, you know, if it's a, um, you know, if you don't have, if from back a curb, if we wanted to make that fifteen, you know, that, um, we would ask for an easement or whatever the remainder is. So, um, again, you know, we're not, we're not the only ones that are thinking about these things and struggling with this and coming up with, uh, solutions. I personally feel like this is a good stopgap measure. It's not perfect. If we wait for perfect, then we're gonna get a whole, we're gonna get buildings in that, in that area. And then that goes away really fast. I think we haven't seen TC one because we haven't had it for long enough. I've been working on one. It takes a lot of time to get through the city process. So I don't think that was gonna happen within a year. Um, and I think we're getting other ones in, in those districts because they've been going through the pipeline for a couple of years. It just takes a lot of time to get through our process. Um, so I feel like this is something that we could do. Um, I, again, agree that it's blunt, but that it's a good stopgap to kind of keep the buildings from taking up some of that space that could be, um, provide a quality experience for pedestrian transit and things like that. Um, so I, I look forward to all the dimensioning and diagrams and further discussion around it. But I'm, I'm generally supportive of, of this approach. Anybody else? I think we're coming up pretty quickly on time here. Okay. Um, I think we did not have any communications, so we'll.
Sorry, Commissioner Kiprandle, sorry, I just wanna, I'm trying to read, read the commission a little bit. Um, to, I know there's this tension between the rezoning and addressing this, and you've asked for a lot of information. Um, we can put that together. Um, it's, that's gonna be devoting more time to it. It's gonna be devoting more of our time. It's gonna be devoting more of your time to it. So I just wanna name that if, um, that that's something that we're interested in undertaking. Cause it's gonna be layered on the work of, uh, rezoning the, the Washtenaw and the Plymouth corridors.
Could it be done in conjunction with that? Like, is that kind of, could that be part of that same effort or does it have to be separate?
From my read, with all due respect to Councilmember Dish and other voices here, there is, there was a resolution that, and there was unease. I know that there's been transition and, and council, but I, I just wanna name that at the time stadium, part of the reason was this conversation about the concern of this. And so, um, that could be, that could be totally irrelevant going forward. I, you know, I, I don't know how that will play out. But I, um, I think that as we go into sort of more mapping and trying to compare the corridors and sort of more in-depth, um, for the purpose of getting towards a bit of a recognized interim measure. I, I just wanna, I just wanna gauge the commission's cost benefit on this, if I can.
Commissioner Abrams.
And I'm not promising I'm gonna listen, by the way, but.
Well, I, I think that the, um, the conversation has been a bit convoluted. I don't mean that in any kind of like critical way, but just that maybe, uh, we're like tying ourselves in knots. And maybe there's a more straightforward way to just think about the question at hand, particularly if we think about it as a, you know, um, if we think about it as something which will solve an issue for now, but can be re-visited later in the future. Which is just to say that the original setbacks that we all felt comfortable with was zero to twenty for mixed use. I think now what we're realizing is that maybe we want a minimum. We can debate whether the minimum should be ten, twelve or fifteen, but we wanna make sure there's some minimum. So zero isn't good if we have only a nine foot right of way. But if we just said, well, there's a minimum of fifteen, but at one point, that's, we were already comfortable with nine plus twenty. I mean, or, or we lived with it. We voted it up. So I'm just wondering if there's a way to just say, well, minimum fifteen. And, you know, I guess, yeah, we could be debate whether the thirty should come down to twenty-five or something like that. But, um, I'm not, I guess I'm not sure that it requires so much more information that we need to be like drawing cross-sections and studying all these different conditions. Cause the other thing is that this is really something that applies in these instances when we own, when we have this narrow right of way, right? There are a lot of places where we have massive right of ways, and that's all, that's the opposite issue that we're gonna have to deal with. Um, where things like can't come close enough to the street. So I don't know if that helps, but I feel like I could pretty easily, you know, I probably would vote for twelve over fifteen, but I could live with fifteen. I, I'd prefer twelve. And, uh, I could live with thirty, even if I probably would prefer twenty-eight or something.
Mr. Leonard, do you wanna go or who, who make, do you wanna respond to that or do you wanna wait?
No, I, I appreciate that. I'm honestly trying to size s- some level of how much resources that I, we, we've just got a lot of comedic, competing demands and I'm trying, TC one, there's a lot, there's a lot of chaos around it. And, um, I, I feel like I am making some steps to sort of organize that a little bit. So I'm feeling like I'm coming out of the woods with that a little bit. But, um, that, that's the kind of feedback I'm looking. I'm trying to find the sense of, we, we have some more information to get to. Um, I'm trying to size how detailed, how far I go in that versus kind of getting this frankly to the commission for kind of an up or down vote. Um, so that you can also spend the time on those next corridors or, or what's next. So that, I appreciate that. And if anybody else has thoughts in that realm, I, I'd be grateful for it.
Commissioner Sobe.
Also, I don't need anymore. Um, but I also understand that some of the concern about West Stadium was two recusals and absence, so it required a unanimous vote. And so some of the concerns, I think, were Commissioner Kiprandle, you know, providing that vote. But it was a numbers game more than actually a concern of the commission representative of if this was actually an issue. So I just add that to, like, if I'm not refusing myself from two other corridors and we actually have the attendance, this shouldn't and wouldn't be an issue. Uh, maybe to Commissioner Abrams' point, we were comfortable with this before. We just had less people um, being able to support it. Uh, and that may be where the uncomfortable is, is actually, you know, a voice and a unanimous need of adoption more than it is actually a broader concern. So I am comfortable with no more information focusing on rezoning. I hope that's clear.
Commissioner Dish.
Okay, I, I didn't entirely follow what Commissioner Sobe just said. But I will just say that since I'm the person who said, I feel like I'm not understanding this very well. After you showed the Planet Fitness example, I understood it. I just didn't, I didn't understand that we did setbacks from the property line. So that actually helped me a lot. And clarifying, in most places, there's at least four or five feet of right of way. In many places, there's nine or ten feet of right of way. So a minimum setback from the curb is going to mean something like, a minimum of fifteen feet setback from the curb is gonna mean some, anywhere from nineteen to twenty-five actual feet to do things with, if I'm understanding that. Am I still understanding that? Okay, so, um, I don't need, as, I don't feel that I need too much detail. You know, maybe worst case or best case scenario along a couple of the corridors in the way that you actually did for us, Mr. Leonard. Um, but it, but, um, you, I don't think you realized, um, the, the level of um, unfamiliarity in your audience. And so you might have shown those a little differently if you knew that I didn't understand that. So, um, there may not be, I, 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 I don't know what the level of discomfort is on planning commission with the, uh, the idea of a zero setback as we traditionally measure it. I don't know what level of it. I heard more than one person express it. And, uh, I don't think it's just a few people on council. And I don't, and again, on council, we are representing majorities of people. And some of those majorities would, would gladly put, um, dining in the streets to narrow them. I mean, no, obviously not, because you don't want people to be run over by cars. But there are some people who vote who really, really wanna constrain streets and give space to bikes and give space. There are a lot of folks in this city who, as Mr. Leonard said, imagine that they will be driving. They will be driving. They will be owning fewer cars, but they will still be driving. They might be driving electric cars, but they will still be driving. And they have to be represented too. And so when council debates these things, whatever our own desires and ideals for a fast move into the future are, we have to remember that we're elected by a coalition of, of super progressives and moderates. That's the only way it ever works. And that was part of the discomfort that was expressed on council. And it's, it may not be a personal person's discomfort. It may be what they understand to be the discomfort of their constituents, whom, yes, they wanna move into a future without cars, but not tomorrow. Because that's not realistic. So I'm just being honest here that I do think that we need to listen to council on this issue that there, I think there is genuine concern about.
Commissioner Hammerstein.
Um, I'll echo that when you showed that example, Mr. Leonard, just on the screen. That was, that was super helpful. So it's not to drag this out in an effort to reprioritize rezoning. Um, I, I don't think I would need all that much more information either. So I'd rather you put your resources. I personally would rather you put your resources on that and we can just, I'm fine with the fifteen and the thirty for now, because as we know, we can always revisit it.
Commissioner White.
I just wanna say I don't need anything back. I was fine with zero to fifteen. And, um, you can bring it to the table next week and I'd be prepared, uh, to vote. Uh, my prioritization for staff time is the rezoning of Washtenaw and Plymouth uh, to TC one, as well as picking up some things, uh, from our work plan uh, that we haven't gotten to, uh, while we're waiting for the con plan, so.
Commissioner Clark.
Yeah, I just wanna echo that, the, I don't, I'm like, um, Commissioner Sobe's comment about not really needing more information. Um, I'm comfortable with zero to fifteen. Um, I think we kind of analysis paralysis situation, um, coming up with this and where we're focusing on such a small area of how many acre or, you know, miles of land. Um, and so bringing more information back to the table at this point, I feel like it's decision time. And whether the political capital exists or not, that's more like council's role. Our role is to advise on what's in front of us and not necessarily protect, protect what a majority of people. Cause we all know that majorities oppress, you know, the smaller number of people. That's how it works. That's why, you know, we have to consider, yeah, anyway, I digress. Um, but I, I just take issue with that and sticking straight to the information that's in front of us. I'm comfortable with, you know, my decision and on that. And I would think it would be kind of a waste of time to continue gathering data points when really it's decision time.
Commissioner Mills.
I asked for data points or the image, um, that, uh, Commissioner Dish talked about. If you're gonna put any, pull any other ones up that you're gonna put in the packet, why don't, we should do it of the corridors that we're thinking about proactively. And if there really are places where that it, it's pretty close, um, particularly in Washtenaw, which I think there is. I actually just Googled this myself. Reimagine Washtenaw. I don't know if anybody remembers that. Like discussion about the width of the right of way there and kind of how close people side, you know, like the property line is to the curb was something that came up back in twenty fourteen and reimagine Washtenaw. So it shouldn't be too difficult to find some good examples that you can help illustrate, just as you did to Commissioner Dish. Kind of what's, uh, earlier today. So that's the only thing that I would, I still do think that that would be useful in the, even for going beyond. But I don't, yeah, otherwise, I think we should vote on this soon.
All right. Thank you. I, I appreciate those last, that, um, that helps Hank and I sort of prioritize how much resources and how to package this. So I really appreciate those last comments.
Commissioner Clark, do you still have your hand up? Like, are you? Okay. Yeah, um, and I would, I, I would echo that. I'm ready. I don't need the thirty, frankly. So, um, I, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with the fifteen. Um, I don't know that we need to go that, that big. So that's, that's my two cents on that. Um, okay. Barring anybody else, I will move on to our last section of public comments. Um, to speak to the commission, press star nine and pressing by phone or use the raise the hand feature for phone access. Call eight seven seven eight five three five two four seven and enter meeting ID nine seven seven six six three four one two two six. Unmute, press star six. City staff, plus a lot of callers that have raised their hand. And speaking, please move to a quiet area. State your name and address at the beginning of your comments for three minutes. Do you have anybody?
There are no current hand trays.
No current hands? Wow, okay. Alrighty, I think that we are onto adjournment then. Right. Bye, everybody.